Order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Okay, first up is approval of the agenda. Second. They moved in saying to approve the agenda, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those same sign. Moving on to informational items, winter weather procedures.
This is just our standard operating procedure that we put out each year. Um, yeah, I think it actually had maybe one correction in a punctuation this year from last year, so no major changes. Um, and so we just wanted to make sure that the community had seen it and everything was the same. Uh, no real other information than that.
Anything, Dan?
Oh, well, last week we had a meeting with National Weather Service, all the directors in E S C one twenty-three. They said it can be colder and wetter this year.
Oh.
But she wouldn't say it was snow or rain or fog or anything, just colder and wetter.
Didn't they say that every year almost?
Yeah. So just the standard up at by three A M, checking weather on the road. Checking the district, going up the hill, down the hill, district line, and then out towards Ramview and along the river. And then by five calling Kim and letting her know what the roads are and what I see and then she makes the decision.
And that decision is made in cooperation or partnership with, uh, the superintendents up and down the valley as well as our partner, um, Kai B. and Patterson, right, on to the other side. So, um, the goal, obviously, we all have different districts and different terrain and and different busing issues, but we like to be more similar than different. It's easier on our families, especially those that work or commute or have students in one district from work in a different, so we like to be more likely.
Questions? Comments? Um, I see the, the, in the packet, we have these two pages that kind of give ways to notify. Would that be posted?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, just so everybody knows, Selena is on vacation, so Sean is sitting in her seat tonight, but yes, Selena was very good with social media, our parent square and all of our pieces, so it will go out. Probably not long after the first part of November, and we don't want it to go too soon, so it doesn't get lost, but yet we don't want to wait till the last minute.
Thank you. Moving. Moving on to strategic plan update.
So this is just, uh, this is an update of the activities and the progress we, uh, made on, on each of the indicators. We weren't working on every single indicator, some of those will come this year and in future years. Uh, but there, there, there has been a lot of work, some things might be sort of considered done, but really it's a living document, so not always done. So, for instance, we didn't put twenty-four, twenty-five on here yet, but if you look at, at the very top under goal one on one point, one point two. We talked about the potential of adding an early learning classroom, well, this year we did add early learning classroom, so that will be on the twenty-four, twenty-five.
Yeah. Is it possible to share screen lately? Are we using a PowerPoint?
No, it's, it's in the, uh, in the agenda, it's just a document, it's not about going. So you can see there has been quite a bit of work, it is, uh, for your plan, there's ongoing work. And, uh, we're continuing to work on it, some things that we would have liked to have happen this, this full year, which it was not possible this past full year. So those are some things, some of those things we're working towards. If you have any questions? I would give an example while, um, Blake was pulling that up, are you able to share screen again? Yeah. Yeah, it's gonna be hard to see, but for example, um, one of the items was a communications director, Frank, and talked about that. And we're getting better, and I'm gonna look to my partners, my right kids, Elise, those are things that are in our dreams and our pieces, but we have to continue to be mindful of budgets. And in the situation that we're in, that may be something that just has to be moved forward to a future year. That would be an example of something that we know is relevant and is important, but it's something that may have to wait, that's just an example. I think that everyone here should also, and, and listening online, should note that we did a lot of this work at our, um, admin retreat in August. Um, it allowed us to work through that, spend time and dig deep into it, and it also helped shape our district improvement plan and then in turn for school improvement. And really, um, at, uh, retreat, we're necessarily doing this work, we were updating all of it, so of all the work that have been done for the school year. Uh, just sorry, just a little clarification, because we didn't have that much time on our retreat. Um, but it's, you know, like I said, it's a, a work in progress, we're continuing to work on it, there's also a lot that's already been done in twenty-four, twenty-five, so we could do maybe a, maybe a February, every day to kind of progress so far of our twenty-four, twenty-five, if you'd like.
Yeah, I think that'd be good, it, it's nice to have this document, you know, we all work, you know, not only did staff, but the community all work, put this together and forward, it's, it's a good, it's a good way for us to keep moving. It's good. I, I have a couple of questions, but it's down in. Goal four.
Okay, got it.
Under four point two, it says explore web-based solutions for maintenance and facilities ticketing management. Um, it says it's already started and currently being used, can you clarify that and how it's being used?
So we, after several years, had a ticketing system for technology, so we actually implemented the same system where staff can just go on, staff and commissioners, whoever can go on to the staff page and enter a ticket for a, for a, um, service, something they need done, fixed, prepared, and he can add on to it.
Yeah, so we, we.
And bring it all the way, all the way right in front of you.
We're still using carbon office, and we got down to our last stack, and I said, I'm not gonna reorder more of this, it's ridiculous, so Sean went through and relabeled. I won't say relabeled, uh, made a, what do you call it? It's just an extra icon to click on, but then the, the tickets are, the work tickets come to us, and then we have the, uh, custodians all doing a, for their weekly orders, for paper towels and stuff, they have their own, then that comes to us. And so it's all, it all comes via email, uh, I print them out, I have it on the wall, and the hope is in the not talking in the future, do away from printing all to get them, but that's how we do it.
Is this something that I can be tracked over year over year?
I'm sure you can go back and look at the past four quarters, and then as, as, as we finish them, I have the guys initial on data, and then we have a file, uh, where I keep them a year at a time, and then we'll start over next year and throw them away and so on. But yeah, that's, that's how we're tracking them.
Didn't know, and I, I mean, there's probably more that goes into that as far as maintenance, getting new wiring or something like that.
I, I honestly, I don't know, the, the tech side of it, I mean, you've seen a lot of flip phones, so. The tech side I don't understand, but, but getting away from the paper is my ultimate goal, and then I can just assign it to, to the guys, whoever it's going to, and they'll, you know, check their email, whatever, every morning and have work orders listed for them, is the plan.
And then the nice thing about it is, for instance, say, um, there's something we had to do, maybe it's not an emergency, but something needs to get done, and I'm like, geez, I, I asked, I sent that in like a month ago and haven't heard, I haven't seen it get done. You can go in and you can, I can open up my own tickets and I can update them, I can put in a question, I can say progress, so he, he does the same thing, go in, so you, you can kind of monitor as it works through as well through that system, it's not just going in there and disappears.
Okay.
Yeah, one of, one of the, the problems, growing pains, whatever you want to call it, we've had is, is it lists, uh, critical, important, I think there's four levels, and the one thing I've noticed is everything is critical.
Of course.
So, I mean, it is what it is, you get used to it, but ultimately, that would be the goal, so, uh, uh, a squeaky door is low, a nail sticking out of the floor is critical, or you know what I mean?
Right.
So, something to that effect, we just haven't gotten there yet, so.
Great, thank you. I imagine technology-wise, that can get pretty trackable or, I mean, you can get pretty intricate on some, on some of that stuff. Um, my next question is on four point two, point two, uh, design and implement of facilities and maintenance plan. Says a study and survey grant is completed and received. Um, I know we went through that, I don't know, a couple of meetings ago, um, but from what I can remember, um, is that didn't really, it just did buildings. It did the heights, you know, all the school buildings, but it didn't do like.
Grounds or.
Uh, didn't do like track, it didn't do all that, so.
That task force still has to be put together, but, um, we were waiting for that first piece.
Okay.
So we knew what wasn't covered and what was done. Um, Ed Champagne will be on, uh, later about the, the two building commission reports, but we learned something from Mark Brown. I had sent the email and said, okay, we're ready to do this resolution, he says, no, you're not quite, and he said there's some steps that still needed to be done, but I think the next piece is to put that facilities task force together, and maybe even, I don't know, with guidance from everyone, what would that name really be? Because facilities does kind of get to the i-buildings concept, and, um, maybe it's something about maintenance or capital or something like that, so that all of those pieces are. We've had a couple of community members reach out, I'm talking about the friends of the field concept and some different pieces that way, so I think that all kind of has to kind of come together so that we are looking long-term. And so maybe what I'm hearing from, um, Jason is that we need to potentially change the verbiage in that, that if that doesn't, it's not all encompassing by just having the study and survey done.
Yeah, I would agree with that, because I mean, you know, two years ago, we were talking about a track that was unusable, you know, but if you did maintenance over the last twenty years, you know, you might stretch it. You might be able to extend the life of it, same with like the tennis courts, you know, we're putting all this investment in, it'd be nice to have all the facilities included, all the building, everything that we have, that, so it's a plan into the future, so. That's all the questions I had, anybody else have any?
I don't have questions, my comment is, it's nice to see the items that we've asked to have addressed be addressed, and the partnership with the Princess Theater and just bringing the arts in, I know that, um, the P C O did a great job of bringing enrichment in, so it's nice to see that we, I think, work together, work with the community, work with the staff, and put a plan together and that, so that's nice.
I appreciate that acknowledgement, and I want everyone to understand that it is that, it's a plan, and I think Deanna mentioned it very good, it's a growing, living document, and our hope is that we continue to address the things that don't get addressed and not, and spend our time as equally, or as, I'm not equally, but that we don't forget an area, I think that's the other hope.
Any other questions? Student reps, do you have a question, any question? All right. Thank you. All right, so we'll move on to. Yes, public comment, that's what I was trying to find. Um, do we have, we have people signed it, Blake, is there anybody online? Okay.
I, this is T J, I'm online, sorry, I didn't post anything.
I see, send it. All right, so addressing the board, you may present a concern to the board during the time reserved for public here, public comment. If this is the case, we ask that you, prior to the start of the meeting, sign in, noting the topic you intend to address to the board, the microphone here at the front, uh, and state your name. Uh, do not reflect adversely on the political or economic view, ethnic background, character or motives of any individual. Do keep your comments concise, non-emotional, and brief. We are interested in hearing your concerns and your compliments too, and it's always best to call the superintendent's office a couple of days before this meeting. If this isn't possible, you can ask the board to, president to recognize you during this hearing section, which is now, so we'll go for three minutes per person for a total of twenty minutes. First up is Kimberly Starr.
I'm just gonna coach everybody real quick, you do to be heard well, I know it's awkward feeling, you do want to have your mouth pretty close to the microphone, pull it close, um, kind of centered, and, um, we don't want you to feel awkward, but it's a way to allow everybody to hear, thank you.
My name is Kimberly Starr, and my kiddo Alex graduated from Prosser High School in two thousand fourteen. In December of two thousand nineteen, they told me they are transgender. They said one of the reasons they waited so long to come out was because they did not feel safe doing so while a student in Prosser. It saddens me that my child did not feel as though they could live their truth because of fear of violence and harassment from their peers and rejection from adults. I love my kiddo unconditionally, and they told me they recognized it when they were growing up through my words and actions. When Alex told me they are transgender, they said they did so without fear of rejection because they saw how I treated and talked with my Spectrum Youth Group members and with Prosser High School students. By embracing, by embracing people different than me, I created a safe space for my own kiddo to be vulnerable and truthful. We have an amazing relationship which I value more than words can express. After reading some of the recent comments on a community Facebook group, I asked Alex specifically about their experience using public restrooms. In their response, which they told me they could share with you, they said, my goal is simply to do my business and to get in and out as fast as I can because I do not feel safe in either a women's or a men's restroom. The website, theconversation.com reports, there is no reliable data that supports the argument that transgender people commit violent crimes at higher rates than cisgender people. Transgender people are more than four times as likely to be the victim of a crime as cisgender people. Data shows trans exclusionary laws result in dramatic increases in violent victimization for transgender and gender non-conforming children. Where laws do permit transgender people access to sex segregated spaces in accordance with their gender identities, crime rates do not increase. There is no association between trans-inclusive policies and increased crime. Trans people are significantly more likely to be victimized in sex segregated spaces than our cisgender people. Dehumanizing anti-trans language normalizes speaking to and treating trans people in cruel and objectionable ways. Anti-trans lang, excuse me, anti-trans language and legislation have no value on our society or this district. All students have a right to feel safe and to be treated with respect. In the words of my friend Jacqueline Bush, the question boils down to what kind of world do we want to make for our children and for ourselves? When words are both true and kind, they will change our world. Ostracizing and othering children is wrong, doing so is rejecting those who need and deserve support. I hope our school board members will consider all students in this discussion and if action is taken, thank you.
Thank you, Kimberly. Next up is Amy Holberg. Is the microphone on? Okay.
There we go.
There you go.
So parents are entrusting their children to our district. The school district's job is to educate our students and to keep them safe. So when it comes to educating, we're already failing. At Housel Middle School, thirty-two percent of students are proficient in math, forty-three percent are proficient in reading, and for the district, thirty-seven percent are proficient in math, forty-one percent are proficient in reading. So we're clearly failing our students when it comes to educating them. Now keeping them safe in regards to this new, um, letter that we received about allowing biological boys into girls bathrooms and biological girls into boys bathrooms. Um, this is putting our students at risk, so I'm sure you all have heard about in Loudoun County, uh, Virginia, um, a boy who was identifying as a girl went into the girls bathroom and raped a girl. Now that family is suing the school district for thirty million dollars. Um. Children are already, when they go to gym class, they're required to change their clothes. If they do not, they don't pass the class. It's already uncomfortable for students to change in front of their own gender, let alone a different gender. Um. Not only does it make them feel uncomfortable, it also puts them at risk. Um, there's the risk of girls getting raped, there's the risk of girls getting pregnant because a boy can now go into the girls bathroom, say that he's a girl, go in with his girlfriend, have sex in the bathroom, while their parents are sending them to school, thinking that they're safe, but they're not, and now the girl comes home pregnant. So we as a district need to think about, I know that we're doing this because we're getting funding to go along with this, and if we don't, we don't get funding, but now we're putting ourselves at risk of lawsuits. Um, a teacher also sued Virginia schools because the teacher refused to use the trans students pronouns and is now schooling, suing the school for five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars and one. So, and as educators, we should be able to, we are required to treat every student with respect, but we also should be able to have our morals and stand with those morals. And if we believe that it is wrong to call a boy a girl, then we should not have to be forced to do so to keep our jobs. Um, that's all I have to.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Uh, next up is Hudson Holberg.
My name is Hudson Holberg, and I'm here to talk about the board, I'm sorry, here to talk to the board about the school being inclusive. I believe that, um, the school tolerating biological boys or girls entering the bathroom lo, or locker rooms, or having accommodations made for them as if they are not the sex they are born as, is unacceptable. The reason for this is because any person may suddenly decide they may just want to enter the bathroom of the opposite, sorry, opposite sex. That leaves many opportunities for many bad things to happen. Some of you may have daughters, would you guys feel comfortable with me following them into the locker room and showering with them? I wouldn't do that, but I know many students would. Um. They would not have an issue with doing that, simply to be perverted, and catering to a small amount of students that identify with a different gender can cause horrible repercussions for the rest and majority of students. Thank you.
Hudson. Uh, Camille Klingel.
Thank you. Um, I have a couple of purposes for being here tonight. Uh, the first is to make a confession, I, I've been a, I'm a retired teacher, and even though I taught for many, many, many years, there's always been a section of our population, a part of our community, that I've been really afraid of. And it was so extreme that as I was raising our children, our two daughters, that I didn't want them to be influenced by this section of the population that I'm intimidated by, I'm afraid of, and I don't understand. But I had to come to grips with the fact, because I'm talking about teenagers, that my daughters were ultimately going to be teenagers as well, and so I realized as they became teenagers, and yeah, I was very worried about it, because I, I'm, I'm more comfortable with younger kids, I'm more comfortable with older people too, but teenagers are always a challenge, they're, um, I mean, I, I would, um, chances are, as a parent, there are more parents that would recognize challenges as opposed to not, but it's still glorious. And so as my daughters became teenagers, I realized that through understanding them, I was less afraid of the teenage population, and that continued even after, you know, they've become adults. But I thought, maybe I've arrived, maybe I won't be concerned about teenagers anymore, but it's not true, I knew my teenagers. But I'll tell you something, in recent times in Prosser, in our community outside of school, I've been able to spend time with teenagers in a new way, and I'm, I'm gonna hit on the partnership with the Princess Theater, the Prosser High School Princess Theater, actually, it's every school in our district that has formed a partnership with Princess Theater. And so I get to see these kids because I volunteer at the theater, and they're teenagers, and, and, and we understand each other, and, and I'm not afraid of them anymore, and it's been really fun. Another thing that's happened recently, and I, I'm really happy to share good news, Prosser Community Band is a new thing, started by old folks like me, but we have teenagers, we have high school students showing up for our practices and our performances, and I'll tell you, through understanding, fear is diminished. And I hope that as we address other issues of diversity, we can see through our fear and with understanding that fear has dissipated, and I hope that we all seek to understand every student as an individual, and, 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 uh, and we learn from each other and everyone benefits. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up is T J Maines, uh, I believe he's on.
Yes, I'm, I'm online here in Olympia, Washington, can you hear me okay, over?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, yes, tell me when the time starts, I'm already stressed about it.
You, you better get going.
Okay. Well, yeah, I'm just, I'm just calling in, uh, thank you for your time about the hospital twelve oh seven that was mandated by the state of Washington, and I understand the policy was adopted due to the state mandate, I, I get R C Ws and laws, that's what I'm dealing with over here now, so. You may ask why I'm concerned, as my wife and I homeschool our three boys, or the loss of three F T Es. But I have a wife, I have nieces, I have cousins, and I'm speaking as this is morally wrong. I'm going to assume that ninety-nine percent of the people believe that biological males do not belong in biological female bathrooms, locker rooms, or sports teams. So with this mandate, biological females' rights are not considered, they're thrown out the window. And what about how they feel? You can't tell me they're gonna, not gonna be uncomfortable with a biological male changing next to them in a locker room or going to the bathroom in a stall next to him. And we're adopting a policy, again, I know it's state law, to appease a small percentage. It is time to take action and stop talking about this. Parents need to take a stand now and not fear what the small percentage of people who support this mandate will say. We're called a hater if we disagree. And that's not true, love doesn't mean approval. The director, my director said in a meeting one time, don't crap on my porch and turn around and leave, meaning. He, he's stick around and help clean it up, so, meaning, i- if you bring an issue to me, don't just turn around and leave, help find a solution, so that's what we need to do as a community. So what can we do locally? If the answer is nothing, the only option, parents, that you have is to pull your kids from government school, and I call it government school because it's not public school, so stop using public school, it's government school because it's funded by the government, and they're telling us what we can do locally, so it's government school. Reach out to your state representatives and let them know. And then for girls sports, and this breaks my heart to tell you this, as I wa, was able to attend state three straight years. But if you want this to stop, if, if there's a biological male that wants to play on your team, or if you're playing against a team with a biological male, you have to forfeit. To make a stand, and I'm sorry, that breaks my heart, I've never had to forfeit, I've experienced winning, I've experienced losing, but I've never had to forfeit, so I do not say that lightly.
T J?
But the, yes.
I'm sorry you're three minutes.
Okay, nope, that's good, thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, T J.
Make, make good choices, hi, Desiree. Bye.
Next up is Andrea DeBryce, DeReese. Next up is Andrea DeBryce, DeReese.
My name is Andrea DeReese and I graduated as one of the PHS valedictorians twenty years ago. And um, I was in the first health occupations class, I was involved in FFA, I had a great experience as a Mustang. My husband Grant and I have lived in Prosser for the last fourteen years, and we have five kids that are school-aged. We have chosen to homeschool our kids for their early elementary years because we wanted them to have a strong Christian foundation, and we knew that that isn't the job of the public school. However, our goal all along has been for them to transition to school when they were older. I'm here today because I saw the post about the gender inclusion policy, and I'm proposing actually that the root issue isn't necessarily a policy, although I agree with the concerns. I think the root issue is a belief that can exist in the public school, which is that schools know what's better for kids than parents do. And so I'm not assuming it's the true of the majority of staff or anything like that, but from the outside looking in, a policy like the gender inclusion policy conveys a message that schools have more authority than they actually do. Parents do the educating and the forming of their kids from the moment that baby's born, through all kinds of things, feeding, talking, teaching to walk, right, praying with them, conversations around the dinner table, putting them on sports teams and in piano lessons, and parents can choose to put their kids in school so that they can have help educating them, and I think that's a great thing. But school is in essence contracted by the parents to do the job of helping them educate their kids, and it's still under the authority and the direction of the parents. I truly believe that staff and teachers go into the field of education to help kids, but I wonder if sometimes that good intention can slide into overstepping and taking a role that parents should be providing, potentially to the detriment of a parent-child relationship. And I think that's a terrible thing if kids lose respect for their parents. As a school district, let's do everything that we can to encourage kids to love and respect their parents. So what does it look like in real life? I have seen this done well in the medical field. Even though in the state of Washington, minors of any age can legally get an abortion without their parents' knowledge or consent, I have watched physicians counsel with compassion and kindness to encourage young patients to include their parents. And I think usually the child wants that, that's what I've seen, they just don't know how to navigate those conversations. So kids need supportive adults outside their family in their life, but that support should always be given with the intent of connecting kids to their parents. I think it's possible, and I think you guys are absolutely the group to do that, to further the school culture, to be even more pro-family. I feel the energy, and I really do, I see the good work that you're doing, so three ideas, continue to hire staff that value family, view situations through the lens of how can we be respectful of the parents, and then train and remind staff over and over again, we are for the parents as much as we are for the kids. And we want to help the pair, the parents raise their kids, keep up the good work. I have my paper here because I couldn't fit it in three minutes.
Thank you Andrea. All right, we got time for one more, uh, Laura Jansen.
So I didn't prepare anything specifically tonight, I'm just kind of winging it. I want to come talk to you because like everyone else, I saw everything online, and I was here a couple of times last year. In my line of work, I work in hospice, and we talk about every day, live your best life, helping people live their best lives, um, especially at the end of life, but that's not the only time that should happen. I take that home with me, I take that with me every single day, we should be helping people live their best lives. I want to live my best life, I want to help my daughter live her best life. I think that every, every single kid in the Prosser School District and everywhere should be living their best lives. And we should be empowering them to be their most authentic selves, to be their best selves. And don't, they shouldn't have to hide who they are because they're going to be bullied, they're going to be made fun of, like, I so I've talked to you guys so many times about stuff like this, and it frustrates me to no end that kids continue, like, it may just be a small group of kids, they continue to be picked on, they continue to be bullied, they continue to basically be told they shouldn't be living their best life, they shouldn't be living their most authentic life, they shouldn't be being themselves because it's different, it's not normal, whatever reason you have, it I like, I can't fully describe how much it upsets me. And to sit here and watch people talk about these kids like they're not important, like they don't matter, and to watch some of your faces, like, I know that nothing I say, I know that nothing some of these other parents will say or community members will ever change your mind, it will never get through, it will never change some of these other people's minds, they'll never see it. But like, someone mentioned it could have catastrophic consequences to let trans women use women's bathroom, trans boys use the boys' bathroom, whatever. It can have catastrophic consequences to those students if you don't, and if you exclude them, like, I don't want to see another Prosser student take their own life. It's happened a couple of times since I've graduated, and it is horrific. Nobody wants to see that, like, we need to support kids and we need to let them know that they're seen and they're heard and they're cared about, like, please think about that, please think about that and make sure that you're doing your best to do that. That's all I got.
Thank you, Lauren. Um, so that concludes our um, public comment for tonight. If those that didn't get a chance to speak, you can submit yours uh, in writing, and we'll put it in the minutes, and you're more than welcome to come at the next meeting and and do that, so, thank you. All right, next up is student representative reports, do a little different, Alexandra, you're up first.
Well, I've been continuing to work with Darlene Morrow in uh, addressing the concern about food portions and such. So we've both created a form, students will be able to fill out, that will be in the bulletin, where they can fill out things like, is there, do you think you're getting enough portions, not enough? Is there any food that you don't like that we serve, is there any food that you would like us to serve, and um, some other questions? So that will hopefully address the concern that some students have been having.
Any questions for Alexandra?
Alexandra, you're great at reaching out and making surveys and getting student feedback, and I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Kimmy?
All right, covering athletics, volleyball won their senior night last night, taking all three sets. Football on Friday at home versus Cela, we will be doing a miracle minute, not Cela, Ellensburg. We'll be doing a miracle minute, so please consider donating if you go. Soccer earned their league champ title after fourteen years, heading.
That's you, right? That's you, right?
That is me. Heading into district tournament, we play East Valley at home on Saturday.
Congratulations.
So for ASB, um, Pink Week, my gosh, sorry, Pink Week is going well, and we've raised over a little a little over one thousand dollars so far. Um, for band, we have a field show during halftime at Friday's game, uh, come and support, come and support us. For miscellaneous, um, I know many appreciate the amendments to the student handbook brought forth by House Bill twelve oh seven, I think a lot of good, hardworking students will feel recognized by it, even through the comments against it and the children themselves. The students have seen it and appreciate your work. Um, we need to have more understanding for each other as human beings, to quote, to quote Camille here, um, through understanding, fear is diminished.
Thanks, Yashim, any questions for our board reps? Appreciate it. All right, moving on to discussion items, digital ticketing, Mr. Jackson.
Don't forget to turn on your microphone.
All right, straight to the point, no sugarcoating this. But before I get started, congratulations to the girls, you had me jumping up in the gym last night, so great work. So I'm going to talk about digital ticketing, um, it's more of a discussion, not immediate action item. Based, long story short, the WIAA uh, kind of trickle-down effect to District Five, which is our district that we're in, uh, we're moving more and more towards digital ticketing. And what that is, is having less cash, basically a cashless school district, meaning when we have an athletic events, everything would be either via debit card, credit card, or online ticketing. Um, I don't know if you have the sheet, I, the FAQ sheet that I printed off, I got some of this information from League Schools, uh, so Afraid is in our league, I got some of this information from Quincy and also Ellensburg as well. Uh, some points I want to make about it is, uh, why are the reasoning as to why, um, we want to accept and not accept cash anymore? Uh, for faster entrances to contests, there's a lot of long lines when you go to football games, when you go to basketball games. With digital ticketing, uh, you can get people in and out, uh, to provide safer environment for ticket workers. Uh, there are times where we're carrying around eight to ten thousand dollars, and when you have crowds of five to six thousand people, um, it's not very safe for our ticket takers to be carrying that much cash with them. Uh, and then another point is for cleaner accounting purposes for high school in the school district, and immediate daily deposits per ASB law. So what my uh, main point is, I'm not saying there needs to be any action as to this fall or this winter, but I would like the the school board to at least think about potential for two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six to see if we can possibly implement uh, a cashless digiting ticket, uh, sorry, a cashless digital ticketing system for our school district. Questions?
Uh, I got a question for you, Jackson, um, I don't know if the fees are still the same or not, um, and this probably goes back a couple of years, but basketball game, uh, the discussion somehow got on to how much tickets were costing for the basketball game, can you talk about the fees real quick, maybe?
So the fees for just when you purchase online or, okay, so I don't know how much percentage of it is per dollar, um, but I know I think it's like a dollar twenty is added extra to your ticket, so instead of paying seven dollars, you're paying eight fifty, basically like that.
That's per ticket?
Per ticket, yes, but we do have the option to add um, season tickets, so we can add a pass, so we can use a football pass for a whole football season. We could do a full year's pass, so we could put all the games on, you can buy it right there and then, so every time you go to a gate, you just click it, and then you get in.
Have you seen, um, I mean, you were talking about long lines, has, have you seen the effect of offering online tickets so far with less long lines of trying to get in with cash?
So I reached out to Ellensburg School District, the first year, uh, Cole Cane here told me it was not very well-liked within his school district, but within a year, people understood the system, uh, lines were basically diminished. People got in, people got out. Um, he he did realize that you spend at least sometimes an hour up to two hours after football games counting cash, and when you're counting that much money, there's going to be mistakes made. And so when you go with a cashless system, there's really no mistakes are going to be made.
Gotcha, I mean, I I understand all that, I'm just, I'm one of those guys, it's not a big fan of this move to a cashless society, so, I mean, I I would hope that there would still be an option for people to walk up and pay cash, but.
We have a digital option now, though, don't we?
Correct, we have a digital option and we also have a cash option. Before I came here, uh, so I was here twenty-nine, no, last year was my first year, so the year before that.
The ones are so long for cash.
Correct, because majority of people are still using cash and not really card.
Not, it's not required.
It's not required, but.
Me, the line says, I'm not going to go digital, it's been an option for a few years, and I think it excludes a large part of our community, and to anybody that's going to see my mom in the next few weeks in town, my mom's not going to be able to go online and buy a digital ticket, she's created eBay, but she has to buy a ticket, it's going to be a whole thing. And I feel like there are a lot of people that come, that sporting events, events in school are their social life, and I would hate to see them not be able to attend because they just aren't tech savvy. If it's not required, I mean, and I know that we're talking about accounting and having cash, we've been doing this a long time, this this can't be a new problem.
I will say though, we, our league was this close to making it mandatory for this year, so it's only going to take three or four athletic directors to say this is going to be a new procedure for twenty-five, twenty-six, and we're going to have to change. And I voted no for it because I know how our district stands against it, so I voted with the way I should have voted.
So that begs another question I had in addition to the few that I already wrote down. How can um, the the league or WIA force us to go digital at our home games?
Because it would be a league decision. And we're all in the same league, so we have to follow what the league says for our SOPs.
That might be, I guess that might be a different discussion, I I just don't see how they could dictate what we do with our own ticketing at home. I could see with, you know, if another school does it, then we have to abide by that school's protocols and stuff for buying tickets, but I have a hard time having somebody tell us that we have to go digital. No ultimatum, because I I think Elisa's, I, you know, in her comment, I think she's kind of right, but I also think you know, when you start talking about a dollar, dollar fifty fee, you know, you go to a basketball game twice a week with a, with a family of four or five, I mean, that's five, six bucks a week to just watch their kids play a sport, or volleyball, or whatever it may be. And that adds up over the course of three months of basketball, or whatever sport we're talking about, so I have, I have a hard time with the fee. Um, and what that could do, you know, to the parents and the community members, you know, that that might, that might be hard for them, so, um, I mean, I appreciate all that, I I just have a ton of questions regarding, you know, the ticketing, I know we've done it, um, I know people use it, um, you know, and somehow there's got to be a way to you know, if you want to wait in line and pay cash and sit there and miss the first half, then that's, that's on you, but um, you know, if you have the digital side, you should be able to sneak in and and get around to the around that line, but often that's not the case in basketball. Uh, there's just so many people and not enough scanners or however that, I don't even know how it really works, I guess you'd touch it or something, and then it goes through, but I guess those are my only two concerns, going a hundred percent digital at this time.
Um, so at Grandview, for this last district's game, they did have two separate lines for cash and uh, if you already paid online, so that's how that would be dealt with, just having two separate lines.
Yeah, I would think that the uh, there's some people that I know just don't, just like to use cash, they don't like to use cards or do things online. And I don't think we should exclude them, um, but also if if there are on the online option is available, I would think it would diminish the amount of cash that that those, that they would have to have on hand. Or is there a way we could, they could have somebody come pick up the cash if it gets to be too much, because I mean, that you were saying like seven, eight thousand dollars, that's, that's a lot of tickets. You know, so that, I don't know that, if that would cut in half, it, I mean, at least it would, it would help. But I just, yeah, I just think, um, being forced to go to cashless is, I I would not be I would not be in agreement with that.
I just played one part of your SFP, and that was number ten, it talked about where does the ticket gate money go? And I think it would be a good idea, you know, it says a hundred percent of the gate profits go to Prosser High School ASB Athletics. I don't think people realize that's where their gate money goes, and that that money is used to pay for referees, umpires, for everything. There are some sports that you don't pay this, baseball, softball, and that money has to be spread out. It, it would be possible to have a conversation, and as with the state security, like, we could have signage like that at each gate, maybe a little bit of that grumpiness or um, unwillingness to pay to get in, you could be like, well, okay, it's going to the kids, so suck it up, pay your money and come along, support the kids in this school, so, thank you for putting that there, and I think it's something that people don't realize.
Jackson, I have a question, so you talked about, um, if it went all digital, you could have a, uh, like a season pass or something like that. Is that not possible if we have cash and, because we, I, have we ever offered that before other than the senior pass?
I think that, I think there's just the Golden Age Pass right now, but I know that Afraid has a season pass, they have well, season passes, we're going to season pass. Well, season passes, season passes, if they have a whole year pass.
Is that a, is that a, is that a district decision? Cause I do think that would incentivize people, because if you have to pay a dollar twenty, not such a big deal if you only have to pay a dollar twenty once and you can go to the. Come see Alice and buy your ticket for the season. Um, or buy it online for the season and pay that once. I think that, cause there's people that go every time, that go to every game.
Yeah, I would agree with that. Having a season pass for the year, a sport, I think would go a long ways and probably minimizing how much cash you actually end up having. Which may have, maybe make a lot of this, maybe mute on, you know, conversation. Any other questions for Jackson? Thank you, Jackson.
Thank you.
Moving on to building reports. Uh, first up is Heights Elementary. Jody? Is the mic on?
Green light. Is it green? That's when it's green song. Okay, so we just finished our. Chocolate sales. How many of you bought chocolate? Yes, yes. We just finished our chocolate sales, which is super exciting. The community was. Um, incredibly supportive of us. And so all of our kids are gonna get to be able to go to, um, their, we call it the expensive field trip. So we, um, had asked the teachers to give them a little bit more, um, of a stretch field trip and a little bit more of a. Realistic field trip. And I believe we're all gonna get to go to the stretch field trip. So that's super exciting. Um, so for example. Um, third grade, they do a unit on marine life. And so their stretch field trip was going to the aquarium in Seattle. So we're gonna try to work that out. And so the kids are gonna be able to see. So. I don't think you guys knew that, but there you go. Okay. We're like, Hannah and I are like, okay, now we got plans. Um, and so that's kinda where our kids are doing. Um, we're super excited. And then the other thing that we're, um, really working on and very proud of the teachers and the work, and I really wanna invite all of you to come. Um, to Heights and to see their, um, professional learning communities, their PLCs. Um, for our school improvement, we've really put our eggs in this basket and they're doing, um, amazing things. Um, Mrs. Casey was able to come watch us, was that?
I've actually been there twice in the last week.
Yes, yes, last, it was last Wednesday, last Wednesday and then today again. Um, and so we're just doing some amazing things. So. Wednesday, um, after school around three o'clock, if you're available, or even on Tuesday around one thirty, let me know and we'd love to. Um, you can come with Mrs. Casey here and, um, come check us out because they're really working on their data and, um, talking about their action steps. And what they're doing in order to, um, increase student achievement. So, do you guys have any questions?
Are you going to Seattle to the aquarium without?
I was thinking about this. So if I, like, I was thinking, okay, I probably will go with fifth grade. Like where fifth grade goes, I feel like that's probably, I could probably send, um, maybe my school counselor or Mrs. Cole, because Mrs. Cole. Mrs. Cole has two third graders in my school, so she might wanna go. So, yeah, we're super excited. Fourth grade, they are going, um, to, and I always get this the damn wrong, but they're gonna go to a dam, cause they do the salmon summit. They salmon summit, so they'll already go to that. And last year it was in Prosser, actually. At Crawford Park. And so they're gonna go to a dam and the waterfall, what is it?
Fish ladder.
Fish ladder, yes. So they'll see the fish ladder, but they'll also see, um.
Molnoma Falls.
Molnoma Falls, thank you. Um, so they'll go check that out. Um, so just know that's coming, cause that's out of state. So you're welcome on that too, cause that's news to them. Um, and then for fifth grade, they do a, um. I'm gonna get it wrong. I wanna say ecosystem. Do they do an ecosystem? Thank you, an ecosystem. And so my fifth grade, um, teachers have, they wanna go to a zoo. And so it's a little bit of a stretch, a little bit, you know, it's not so obvious as the other ones, but we're gonna try to make that happen. So that's what. But they did say they're like, can we still switch it? And I was like, uh, yeah, but, so there should, um, they're supposed to let me know by next Friday, uh, when. And so we can start planning those to let, um, Amy know that we'll need buses and to be how much money this is all costing. Though, yeah. And a little bit of a shout out to Heather Holtberg. Um, she's our building secretary and she has, she was the one that really planned this and has organized it. And so she has put in a lot of work in for this. So she did a great job. Okay, all right.
Thank you. Next up is Darlene, food services.
Now it's on? Good evening. So hopefully you got a chance to go through. My, um, information that I put in the packet. Uh, we have exciting things going on also in our food service department. Uh, we have received a farm to school grant from the Department of, um. Agriculture for nineteen thousand five hundred dollars to buy Washington growing. Food. And on last Wednesday, we were granted, uh, three more thousand dollars to spend. So far we've bought, um. Beef patties from Ritzville and we had the rancher come into Witch Strand. And went to every one of the classrooms and spoke with the students on how beef is raised. And gave out stickers and coloring pages to the students. We've also received, um, beef patties from Snipes Mountain Ranch in Sunnyside. That we're going to make, um. Nachos with. We also, um. Gotta read my notes here. With part of the farm to school grants, we have increased our breakfast by three thousand. Per month. The month of September, we did three thousand more breakfast than what we did last year in September. We've also increased our lunch by four hundred and seventy-seven per month. I've also been working with Alex on going over the guidelines that we have for. Our requirements on the. Amount that we can give to students, cause we have to stay in the O S P I guidelines. You have any questions on any of the information that I put into the packet?
Um, I think, uh, that farm to table program, that's awesome to hear that you're, have been able to work with, um, some local folks on. On beef. That's, that's awesome. Um. Question for you. So it says national school lunch program. I'm assuming that's who came out with. These guidelines on servings and is that out of like Washington DC or?
It's, uh, O S P I.
Okay.
And it's, yeah, like, uh, nationwide, the guidelines that we have to go by.
Okay. So there's not much you can do there on.
No, there's not.
I mean, so, some of it like. Um, like on the meat servings, one ounce daily. Eight to ounces a week, um, seems a little low, but. I know it sounds, it sounds like you're probably like everything else that public schools deal with. Your hands are probably tied.
Yeah, yeah, they are. But, but it's also different on what grade level the students are in. On the meat serving sizes. For K through five, it's one ounce, but we can give up to eight, ten. Ounces of meat per week. And then for our high school students, it's ten to twelve ounces per week. So we give usually eight. Excuse me, usually two ounces daily of meat. Uh, O S P I encourages us to encourage the students that they can eat all the fruits and vegetables that they would like. So we offer a wide range of fresh fruits and vegetables that we also purchase with our grant funding.
I am, I, I could probably just need to meet with you one-on-one sometime, but. Um, what would you say like the ratio is of kids that actually eat vegetables versus fruit?
At the high school, I say it's pretty high.
Really?
Hmm, oh, yeah.
Um, at the high school, there is a area which is a self-service, uh, like. Salad buffet. And when I come by, usually like at the end of when all the students have, uh, came by already, that, uh. Things basically have been like picked clean by the students.
Nice, that's good.
I'm gonna add one thing. So last, uh, our nurses requested last year, they really needed an interactive menu because of carb counting for our diabetic students. And so Darlene worked on that. And we have an interactive menu where you can go in on the website, look at the menu and click on the item. It tells you the calories, the carbs, all those things. And that's been really helpful, really, really helpful, because it helps teach students to be independent. They can look at the information to learn their own carb counting. Versus the nurses going, trying to find out, uh, you know, for different particular items on their own, what that is. So that's been really great help. And I know that our nursing staff has really appreciated that.
I am, I'm close. Oh, there we go. Wow. Okay, I was just thinking about if there was some way that we could get. All the, just for example, someone to donate some beef, would that change the amount that the kids could get? Or would that not be acceptable to, cause it doesn't fit in the guidelines of?
It doesn't fit in the guidelines.
Okay, cause I mean, I've, I've sat and watched my ten-year-old son eat a ten-ounce steak in about fifteen minutes.
I know.
And one ounce of beef meat does not sound like that much, but that's just my, my opinion.
No, I agree. We have to talk to O S P I on changing the guidelines.
Darlene, I have one question. It, um, is there a way to track? I'm sure there's certain fruits and vegetables that kids prefer over others. Um, how do you track the ones that aren't successful, that aren't picked through maybe, that are just still sitting in the bowl versus the ones that are completely gone? To where, when, when you, when you purchase new product, that you, you're buying product that's gonna be eaten, not just thrown away?
I feel we've been pretty lucky because most of our students like apples, oranges, grapes, bananas. Um, strawberries. We even have, uh, kiwi berries that we get from one of our grants. And the students at the high school love those things. Like we, I feel we've been really lucky when it comes to fruit. I think we have probably less luck with some of the vegetables, like peas. Um. Once in a while broccoli, not everybody's crazy about broccoli.
You gotta put cheese and bacon on it.
I wish we could. But that would throw us over our, uh.
Right.
Guidelines and, um.
Also, I think you could share about your share bin.
Yes, at each school we have share bins and students have to take the requirements to make a reimbursable meal. And as they go by the share bin, if they don't want the pomegranate. They can stick it in the share bin and then all the other students are allowed to come and pick out whatever they want. So they can also have that to eat.
Nice. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Starling.
I've, I have a question, but it's not about your presentation. Can you talk about the new oven that food services received, I think it was last spring?
We, we actually received, um. Three ovens last spring. One was a rotating oven that we replaced at K R V. And the other two were stackable ovens that we received at the middle school and both of them were purchased with the grant from O S P I. They're both working excellent. We're grateful to have the grant to replace ovens. I still have two ovens at the middle school that need replaced. But I'm always looking for grants to help us out in that. Area.
What's this popular school lunch?
I'd say nachos. What do you think? Thank you.
Thanks, darling. All right, moving on to the M T S S presentation.
Blake, you wanna put that PowerPoint up, please? So I, I've mentioned M T S S several times in my board report. Uh, it stands, it stands for multi-tier systems of support. And there's several members of our committee here that are, uh, my, our building principals. The counselors and some of those other people are not here. They chose not to come and spend their evening with us, but I told them if they could make it, that would be great. Um, go ahead and go to the next slide. So M T S S, it's a framework that schools use to give targeted to support to students that might be struggling. Um, it has a system to identify struggling students and intervene quickly. Um, and it does focus on the whole child, which means they might be struggling academically. They might be struggling with some social, emotional needs. And so it seeks to address those needs to intervene and it helps support the child so they can, um, get in a, a kind of a move up or a level out. So that they can, um, they can succeed. Go ahead, Blake. It's a comprehensive approach to student success. It's a continual improvement process. It uses data to inform practices. So an example of like a tier one M T S S is, um. The, the high school and the middle school are meeting next week because they're, they're, they're gonna implement a cell survey, social emotional survey for students. And that could indicate certain areas that might need improvement and they might, um, start offering groups or they might do some sort of, uh, mental health. They already do mental health awareness, but maybe there's some sort of campaign that they can do that all the students might be, uh, might feel, uh. And helped by, there might be other things that they see where they might see a particular student or students that are really struggling with a certain area and need more, uh, additional support. It's gonna, it connects, there's already met many things that we're doing that supports M T S S. But the idea behind it, and it's something that we're working on, is the word system. It systematizes things because a lot of times we have. This and that and this and that. And then isn't necessarily like a student, for instance, might be seeing one of our counselors. And then I was talking to actually our social worker, Maria, about this the other day. And I was like, you know, are you guys meeting and are you having a conversation about what students you're serving? Uh, so that student X isn't going to Maria Ayala and going to the counselor and stopping in to see the. Comprehensive mental health person. And then, you know, Ed, um, maybe they need all that support. But it really makes more sense for one person to be serving them versus multiple people. And then, uh, so that's part of that system, that, that communication piece. To make sure all students' needs are being addressed. Um, it would align initiatives, things that we're doing already. Um, but making it a system so we're not doubling up and then missing maybe other kids. Um, it helps create safety, it reduces discipline concerns. Um, it does, it's reduces special education and discipline referrals and it increases positive relationships for staff and students. Go ahead, Blake. There's four components. Um, there's systems that help keep practices going. There's a, we have a district team right now. There would be a building team that would, that would focus on, uh, maybe the tier one kind of efforts they're doing, the things they do for all students. Things like I referred to like mental health awareness week. And then there's a team of teachers that would focus more on students that might be having more struggles tier two and three. Maybe that's mental health concerns. Maybe they need academic support in math or in reading or writing. Um, they use data to make all of their decisions. They use, uh, evidence-based practices, those best practices that have proven to work. And then you're always looking at improving. So not only are you trying to help the students improve, but you're also trying to improve your system. Go ahead. So this is the idea. If you think about a pyramid, at all students, um, get certain things. The high school, they have a singing period. At the middle school, they have a swabic class. Um, everybody, uh, has access to, um, different resources. And supports that they need. Everybody gets, everybody gets core instruction in their classes. That's your green layer. Everybody gets that. But, and most kids, eighty to ninety percent of our kids should be successful in that green, in that green layer. Like they shouldn't necessarily need more intervention, or they might need it sometimes, but not all of the time. And then you have some students that need a little more of a targeted intervention. Um, they might be at risk for, um, maybe, uh, you know, uh. Freshmen that failing freshman failures, we're trying to limit freshman failures. So they might need some extra support after school. They may need some tutoring. They might need some extra support from their English teacher. And then you have the students when you really get up to the top that are experienced either really struggling academically or have maybe a long term. Really struggling academically or have maybe a long term, so students who might be identified for special education. Or students that are really exhibiting some really high-risk behaviors that really need intensive intervention. So we want most of our students to be functioning well in the bottom of the pyramid. And then there might be ten percent of those kids, ten to twenty percent that need some additional support in the middle. And then of those kids, there might be another three, four, five percent that need even more support.
I've talked many times about this graph, cause we've seen this nationwide, this is a triangle that's used nationally. I really wish that we could redye and we could physically do it ourselves. But I really wish that eighty percent of the triangle was green. And that then ten or fifteen percent of the triangle line was orange and then a little bit at the top is red. Because I think this misleads that. That it's really not thirds, I guess is what I'm saying, and so. I think that people who don't talk this language all the time, they go to the graphic. And what the visual representation is versus what the actual percentages are. Um, and we talk a lot about this, if we could spend. Eighty to ninety percent of our time. Working on those core academic, what we talked about P L Cs and in the work and in the math. And the, even the social emotional work and all of the other things that goes on. That targeted work would feel way more targeted. Um, and I think that that's just a personal thing, but I want anybody who's listening or watching or has not seen this. Type of a presentation before the triangle really understands that that green really should represent about eighty percent of the triangle.
The green really is the whole triangle.
Yes.
And, and that's. Cause it's everybody, and then there's some layer of orange for part of those students that might need some additional targeted interventions. And then there's that layer of red that really needs some intensive intervention. Um, go ahead, Blake. So there are some examples of tiered supports, go ahead. Uh, some tier, tier ones, really that proactive, the, the proactive work that you're doing. You have an M T S S advisory team in your building. And in your district, you have, you promote really quality school-wide instruction in all your academics. You have op, you can, you're do, always doing things to try to create a positive school culture, our schools do a lot of things, Jody talks about it. Our high school kids talk about the things they do to create positive school culture. Um, you have a college fairs, you have, there's career fair coming up, those are all school-wide activities, these are all tier-one, things that every kid has access to. And, and everybody needs, but lots of kids maybe don't need more than that, go ahead, Blake, tier-two. Um, you might provide some support for, it says caregiver and student workshops. We might provide some parent support, parenting classes, those kinds of things, things to help, how do you help your kid with homework? How do you do, how do you help your kid do this math that they have to do in third grade that you said, I didn't do this kind of math when I was in third grade? Um, study groups for kids, you know, tutoring after school or during school, small group services, maybe a small groups with the counselors. Or a social worker and then mentorship programs are also some targeted tier-two. We do that targeted tier-one, like freshmen, the, like our freshmen, um and. So they all get that, but there are some kids that come out from that that might need some extra support from our counselors, but so. When we have freshman camp and all of that happening, that's a tier-one. Go ahead. And then a big one, this is like, when you get to the tier-three, that should be a very small percentage of your kids. They need behavior intervention plans, they need functional behavior assessments, they need an I E P, a five-oh-four. They might need work with a school psychologist or maybe some mental health. Um, support either inside or outside of school, so those are kids that need that, really need extra layers of support to be successful. Go ahead. This is our team, uh Kevin and I are the co-chairs. Uh, our members, all of our, our five principals sit on the committee, Diana Castilla is a. Uh, counselor at the high school, she had a lot of M T S S work in her former district. Nelson Cardenas is a counselor out at Wood Strand, Justin Fields is a school psychologist at Jody's building. And then Wendy Rodriguez is a instructional coach, so that's, so this team is. Uh, primarily focused now on tier-one and then Kelly Bolson, she's the E S D, she's been um helping and supporting us through the E S D. Go ahead. Um, this is, this one's gonna be harder to read cause it's small, uh but you can see, we show, I showed on here how. M T S S ties into our strategic plan and how it supports those goals and initiatives. Okay, go ahead. Questions?
Um, so the, the list of. The district improvement team, um. I don't know, I guess I'm just a little confused on this whole program, this is brand-new.
So. It's up. It's kinda, I guess I gotta answer that two ways, M T S S has been around for a long time, but we haven't had. Really an effort and a focus on doing it district-wide, buildings are doing different things in their buildings. So last year we started with a district team and that's what we're working on now and we're really focused. On what's happening in our core, our core instruction, what kind of core social emotional activities do we offer for students? What kind of um, uh leadership programs, intervention programs, the things that we'd see in the green that all students get.
So is it? Is it the improvement team that's going out and tackling the, the three tiers?
Okay, so the improvement team, so we had to set goals, like what are we gonna work on? We know that we need additional work in tiers two and three and there is work already happening. We just don't necessarily have it really defined as a system, so me as a student, if I'm in tier-one. And I'm doing great, tiers two and three. Don't really impact me, but as a student, if I'm in tier-one. And I am struggling academically with math in the high school. And I'm also might be having some challenges with my mental health, what hap, where do I go? What's next for me? So that the district team is not focused on that, there will be building teams that focus on that by building. Um, and we're working on that, they already have some teams, sometimes you hear of M D T or S, uh schools, uh S S T team. Um, we just have to kind of refine with some of their processes and how they're tracking students. So this particular group is focused primarily on the green right now.
And it's focused, um, excuse me, it's a focused on. Quality instruction across K twelve. So for example, we invested in our arc reading or our English curriculum, K twelve. Right, and, and it's mainly in K eight, but. We're, we're looking at it and we have to focus on that core curriculum. As a root, if we're reading and writing better, then we're reading and writing better in science and we're writing and reading and writing better in history. And so that's where that tier-one is so important. If we solely focus on the one to five percent, now we're not forgetting the one to five percent. But if we solely focus our energies on the one to five percent, then that is where. And you've talked about this many times as a board. What about the history curriculum that still has Gary Locke as a governor? In the book, so right, we have to focus on that core curriculum and the core instruction. Whether we're using. Thinking maps or whatever strategy we're using, what is working across our district?
A good way to look at it is this, um and we, you know, we talked a little bit about assessment scores here. If we have forty-five or fifty percent of our kids um meeting standard in reading and I, that's one measure, okay? Then. We don't have eighty to ninety percent in the green. So there's, we, we could put as many reading intervention programs in as we want, but we don't have enough resources to address fifty percent of the kids that aren't reading at grade level. If we don't get. Our core reading, that green part, and Kevin, please feel free to jump in, cause I know he has a lot to say on this as well. If we don't get our core straight, if we don't have really solid programs that we can count on academic, so just for the academic side. Having all the interventions the world are, aren't gonna matter, it's like everybody got sick because we didn't wash our hands and now we gotta try to find medicine for everybody and we don't have enough. Kevin has a lot of really good things to say on this and he. He, I know he wants.
Sitting back there.
I know he wants to.
Yeah, and I, I, I guess I'm just like, who's? I mean, I know we're, if we're in the green phase, but I mean eventually like. Who's gonna carry all this out, cause it just feels like our district like. The talk is that we're, we're spread so thin, but yeah, we're trying to. Help, obviously is a good thing, but like, how, how is this getting carried out, I guess?
So this is to address that. So that there's more consistency and there's a system throughout the district, cause right now we have pockets. And if you get that consistency throughout the district, then we can say. If this is occurring in the tier-one and we need to move to a tier-two. This is where we're gonna address this with this tier-two strategy. That also ties to the money, it's very intentional using the data. So you're using that data to figure out where that hole is or that gap in whatever tier you're looking at. And that's where the funding would be tied to, instead of trying to. Address everything, it's narrowing it down and being very intentional. So it's getting the system in place so that we are consistent across the district and what we provide. That's the group at the district level, the building has a little bit different work because they're then looking really. At the data with the kids that are in that building and then moving them through those tiers.
The reality is we're already doing a lot of this work, but it's not, we don't have it. Like the language, like if Kevin's talking to Jody, they might be talking about the same thing, but we haven't systematized it, so they may not realize that. The other thing is, is part of this process is looking at the, some of the things we're doing. Evaluating them and if they're not working, eliminating them. Or changing them, so for instance, we might have. Reading intervention we think is going great, is it? You know, we're looking at data, but is it really producing the results we want, or do we need to do something different? So there's actually what's called a hexagon tool where you evaluate your existing programs or anything you might consider that's new. To make sure it is using the data, it is gonna do, it is gonna support what you're asking it to do, not just the something shiny, wow, this is a new program, this looks great, let's buy that.
So if you use math, for example, cause that's the lowest area that we see on the S B A. You can't intervene out of that. Because your triangle's flipped upside down, here, the majority of those kids are, you know, we're at seventy, probably seventy percent, sixty-five to seventy percent. That aren't meeting that standard, so we're actually. Upside down and we wanna flip it, the only way you can do that is address the tier-one. I mean, I have one intervention teacher at the building, it's not going to be able to address all the kids that are in those at-risk or. Um, severe areas, the reds or the yellows.
So can I, um, can I throw a scenario at you, just cause I, hon- honestly, that, that, this hits our home, um. So tier, tier-three, uh talks about five-oh-four plans. Um. So we, we had a. Child with a five-oh-four plan. And I think his time in high school, there was one teacher. That pulled him aside after the first day of class. Knowing that he had a five-oh-four plan, met with him and came up with a plan. So I'm glad that there's at least talk of trying to fix this. Cause it, this wasn't too long ago.
And that, then that's because, that's because the, because the system. Because the system wasn't built to recognize it in the way it should.
But on that roster, isn't, isn't a student tagged with a five-oh-four?
Um, in Skyward, like if you went and looked, it wouldn't print out on a roster unless you purposely did that.
Part of, part of that is the monitoring at the building level, so we have a DIT team with the district-wide that you saw listed here. Eventually that will go to a building. System be developed, so. Um, for example, the, the five-oh-four plan that has the different strategies on there, how are we monitoring that? That building, yeah, the building team would then be responsible for monitoring those kids that are on those five-oh-fours or I E Ps. And looking at the data to see if there's an impact with those strategies. That's not in place right now.
And if that's not in place, what would ha, what happens is exactly what you described. You, the, the five-oh-four plan might go out and the teachers get a copy and then what? So the district, the building team is the one that's gonna monitor your students' progress and after it's like, wow, we're looking at this and. And we're still seeing some struggles, is this five-oh-four plan not working, is it not? Is it not written in the way this student, meet the student needs, or are we now following?
Doesn't you have to have an annual meeting?
Um, yes, yes. Yes, but an annual meeting is too late if it wasn't working.
Right.
So the dis, so the building would have their own building team. They're kind of the S S T idea that we talked about, where the building would have. A caseload of students that they're monitoring, and five-oh-four plans would be one of the things they would monitor. For student success.
But annual meeting.
Yes, yes. Well, uh depending on the age of the student and depending if that lots of student involved, yeah.
Or doesn't work at the high school, we, you know, try and mess your system. You had your annual meeting, but you might have a different teacher, you know, second, you know, how does, how does that adjust enough?
So I, I, we would have to have the high school come and talk about how they do that, but what possibly happens is. Uh, like for me, when I was a building principal, um I had, one of my counselors managed the five-oh-four plans, all the teachers. That had those students received a copy of the five-oh-four plan, we, you'd normally had a meeting with the parents and the teachers involved. But it would be more challenging at the high school, especially now with trimesters. And kids may be rotating through three different teachers, making sure that, that if there was the five-oh-four plan, it wasn't the one they got in August and they don't even remember that they have it. So that would be a system issue, that will be a system issue for sure. So those are the kind of things this aims to fix.
Any other questions? So part of that is, is creating the non-negotiable. With those procedures that would go with there, if you look at the, one of the things that we will be addressing is the S S T process. So how kids are, what data we're using, how we're monitoring that. How many weeks that's gonna occur before they go into that process to identify? Or to submit to uh special services to see if they need additional um testing. Right now, like I said, it's a little pockets all over.
And like for five-oh-four plans, that team could determine, well. You know what, we realize there's a problem, when kids are training in the trimester, they're not, that awareness, the five-oh-four plan isn't there, we need to have a. Parents need to have a five-four plan when there's a change of trimester with the kids and the, and the teachers so that everyone's on the same page.
Additional comments, questions? Steve Ramb, yeah. Question?
What exactly qualifies, or like what qualifies a student to have a five-oh-four?
So it's actually pretty broad, um. So uh, some sort of uh disability, physical condition, something that would prevent them from being. Uh, successful, so I've had five-oh-four plans for a student that might need. Like they have a vision impairment and so they have to have certain preferential seating in the class. Had a five-oh-four plan for a student years ago because they had a back issue and it was about the certain type of chair they could sit in in class and not. And, um, and then I've seen, and there's been five-oh-four plans for students that might. Um, have some challenges maybe emotionally and need like more frequent breaks. They might be a student that might have an attention deficit issue and they need more time to complete assignments. So it's really just a parent coming forward, a parent or a parent and a student coming forward. With a particular issue that's interfering with their learning. Sometimes that can be addressed without going as far as a five-oh-four plan, like through communication with the teachers and all of that, but sometimes it needs to be formalized in a plan. Kevin has more to add to that.
I can just share with you as a parent of a student who had a five-oh-four plan, sometimes five-oh-four plans are also um. Shorter, they aren't necessarily lifelong, so like when my son had his automobile accident, he was in high school, right? So he had um a, a brain injury, he had whatever, and he went through the process, so he had that five-oh-four plan. Um, and then as his condition improved, then his five-oh-four plan changed. And so it's not always um like academic. He needed behavioral support as his brain was healing and so forth, and so those were five-oh-four plans. And then we make plans inside that to help his academics. Sometimes I've seen five-oh-four plans when a student breaks the upper part of their leg.
Yep.
And they need things for waiver of P E or they need different pieces, so. Five-oh-four plans tend, not always, tend to fall on the medical side of things. Not always, but tend to fall on the medical side of things.
That, that would be accurate, and they, and a five-four plan can follow you to college.
As well as an I E P could.
Yep.
And another question I had was, um, are we not like? Meeting with the students regularly, is that what the um new meeting stuff is gonna be for?
Are you talking about for five-oh-four or?
Or just I E Ps or just any student that needs special stuff?
So the, the minimum is that once a year meeting. That's the like, that's the law, but it, that you can have as many meetings as need to be had. So um part of it is maybe a parent or student advocating for that or a teacher if they're feeling or an administrator, but they're seeing that maybe there's challenges that need to be addressed, so.
Or less challenges.
Yeah.
So it's, it's not something where you live in there also, so if things are better, then maybe we don't need all of those supports and they could go to some. Either someone else or just not needed and then we are saying that our program for that particular student was successful.
Yeah. Good question.
Other questions, comments? No Q and A? Um, moving on to action items. Uh, Prosser Heights Elementary School Final Commissioning Report Resolution ten-twenty-four.
Ed, are you on?
I am.
Okay, so I'm gonna open this up. Okay, so I'm gonna open this up and then I'm gonna let Ed explain. There's two action items on here. Um, they're very similar in their purpose, while they are very different because of the buildings. So I think I'm gonna have Ed explain what a commissioning report is and what the resolution states in general before we get started. On specific questions on, on each building. So can you kind of explain what a commissioning report is, Ed? And then why we do a resolution and what it's actually stating?
So the, the commissioning report is, is generated by a, a commissioning agent, it's somebody that the district has hired to. Kind of go through the, a, a lot of things, not just the HVAC system is kind of the way where they started, but. Anything that's kind of operational, even the irrigation and the, the fire alarm system and that kind of thing. And puts it through, um, you know, functional performance tests to make sure that things are, are operating the way, the way that they should. Excuse me, uh, as far as a resolution goes, that is, excuse me. That is something that's I guess new to, to me, I don't typically get involved in, in that because I'm not involved with the, uh. With the selection or then the, um, the, the commissioning process other than to acknowledge what it is that they're doing. And to make sure that, uh, that the reports come out and say that everything's passed and if it hasn't passed, follow up and make sure that. That whatever the issues are, are, are resolved. Um, but for the, for OSPI is, you know. I guess matching of the, of the, um, the, the commissioning funding. Uh, there, this, the, the final report and the, the resolution for it is, is probably what is required. Um, the other thing that we've got on there is the, is the final acceptance. And do you wanna talk about that now or do we wanna deal with?
Just let's talk in general until we get spot, specific to each building.
Okay. For Prosser Heights, we have the, it's the final acceptance, so that's, this is a, um. A letter that I've sent to the, to the, the, the board or to the district and said. The, the project is complete under the WAC guidelines. There's X number of square feet that is, um, modernization and X number of square feet. That is new construction and all that is, is, uh, gets updated on, um, on ICOS, the, the inventory and condition of schools. Portion of the OSPI website. Uh, doesn't affect, you know, warranty or anything like that, although the, the building is, is. Out of warranty at this point in time. If there were items that were, that were, um. Identified as, as ongoing or whatever, then, then those are still, they'll still happen regardless of whether. The acceptance is, is done now or later. Um, the benefit of doing the acceptance, you know, as early as, as, as reasonable. Is that this starts your, your thirty-year clock for, um. The ability for, for you to get funding on, on this particular building again. Now, thirty years seems like a long time in the future, but I'm already working on buildings that we. Completed thirty-plus years ago, so, uh, it is something that, that, um, that's, that's. Important in the life of the building.
So one of the things that you'll notice in the two commissioning reports, one is a couple hundred pages and one is like. Nine hundred pages or something. Um, those have to do with, and Ed, Ed can help me because I'm learning as we go. But one of the reasons is either the numbers, systems, number of. I don't wanna use the word problems, but that's the word that comes to mind, issues that came up, then issues that were resolved are all tracked. And so we have more issues in some buildings than we have in others. Um, Ed, can you wanna explain why some reports are so huge and one, why some are smaller?
I think that, that's exactly it is, it's, there's, you know, each piece of. The building, the HVAC system, you know, rooftop unit, a, a water heater or whatever. Each building is gonna be different in the number of parts and pieces that they have that are, that are subject to this, um. To this, uh, this commissioning process. And sometimes like with, with anything else, you take your car to the dealership or, or whatever. Sometimes it doesn't get corrected in the first, first crack at it, so they, it has to, you know, we have to go back and try it again a couple of times. And that's why, you know, the, there would be, may be a difference in buildings that we think of as being fairly similar.
Um, the other question was, for example, um, I don't know if any of this team was when the commission report was done for the high school. Um, how many pages? I mean, no, it's thousands of pages, uh, more so than what we have on these. Um, so this process, um, what you're getting is an assurance from. The commissioning. Organization that does the work, that they feel that it has met the standard to go to a resolution to you. Um, while I've gonna say, be honest here, I've read. The summaries and some of the pieces and tracked some of the numbers. I have not read all nine hundred and sixteen pages. I wanna just be really transparent there. What I'm entrusting though is that our partnership with our architect, our owners reps. Our generals and our commissioning agents would not bring something forth to a board. For acceptance of the commissioning report if the school was not at a certain standard. Now, there's always checks and balances, don't get me wrong, but that's what the commissioning report is saying, and that's why. A commissioning organization or company is not your contractor. That's why your commissioning organization is not your architect, right? There are independent companies that go in, basically improve your work. See, you want me to go to work for you, right, Ed?
Excellent, better than I can do. Other questions?
So now I think we can divide them cuz there are different items on the agenda, right? I mean, is there any questions in general though before we?
Did we have the interior repainted at height?
It's, it's still in the works, it's on the, so once again, the paint is not a commissioning item and it's working, it's still under the warranty part of it. But it's not under a commissioning piece. And Jody's not here, but I think the dates have been set for Christmas break. So yes, the paint is still being solved or whatever, but it's. The money negotiation has done, the agreement is done, and now we're just waiting for the time to be able to have the time to do the work.
I have a plethora of questions. But I'm gonna stick to just a few. This, this is such a big document, it's hard to get through everything and, and digest it, but, um, I have a couple questions. Uh, regarding, uh, heights, and I hope I get this right, cuz. So we're, in the commissioning report, everything is completed. I didn't find it in here on the sprinkler system. But now I see that we are in a future agenda item, we're looking at Prosser Heights. Fire sprinkler deficiencies, that's gonna cost us some more money. So my question is, am I reading, Andy, am I reading that right? So, um, if there are deficiencies in our fire sprinkler system that are now. How do we, uh, approve a building that the, that I don't feel is, is finished or completed to standard? And that's just one example, but I guess that's my first question. Yeah, or up to code or, I guess, sufficient, not deficient.
Is that a question for, okay.
Oh, Andy, why don't you come up? So. I think you're a thousand percent correct. I mean, on the question. But I think the piece that I don't know, and I'm gonna be very transparent and that's why I'm looking at Ed at the screen. I don't know the difference between at the point when they did the commissioning. On that date versus what has happened between that date today and when Mansfield came in and did. The investigation this, a few months ago.
I don't remember exactly what's on the list, but it's things like heat sensors and the ductwork that just failed the test. I mean, it's the same, similar things at all buildings. And I, I don't know how often they fail or, I mean, if there's a fifteen-year lifespan or it's just one of those things that sometimes you put a part in and two years later. Doesn't work.
Okay.
And I know there's a couple of things, there was like an outside bell, uh, you know, when the alarm goes off, so I went to check it, well, the bell's gone, somebody took the nut, stole the bell. So, you know, it's gonna have to be replaced and just stuff.
So those are the deficiencies in. Okay.
Almost, well, everything, everything that was, everything that was in the deficiencies list. Uh, whether it's this building or any other, they're, they're either, uh, smoke alarms that didn't pass, you know, spec. Or, or like the bell that was, you know, vandalized or, uh, sensors, smoke sensors or heat sensors in the ductwork, things of that nature. Uh, and I don't know what the lifespan is on some of these items, but every year there's been something.
What about? In safety and security meetings, have there been ongoing issues with the doors locking and the latches at height? I know Riverview there have, but I think.
So I, I've got two work orders just this week on like door closers that, you know, they'll function great for. Or have, have functioned for a long time and then, you know, they just. I don't know if it's an adjustment or just cheap closers. I, I, I couldn't tell you the difference. I haven't bought enough of them in the year and a half. I've been here to know the difference between a really good one and a really bad one. Uh, I know there was some issues with some of the lights and we went to get parts and even though lights were brand new, they were new old stock. So when we went to get parts for them, we were told they're already obsolete, but they were new, they were spec and they, they met, you know, the specifications. So there's little things like that. I'm just assuming when you're pinching pennies, we got, you know, just like the sensors or door closers, maybe there was some cheap stuff. I, I really couldn't say one way or the other, but, but there's been failures like that at, at, you know, small stuff at all the buildings. It's not just. You know, maybe they've had their fair share, maybe the kids are a little rougher on the doors, but it's, it's like that a little bit at all the buildings.
Well, that answered that question, got you off the, the hook, I think, a little bit, Ed. I do have a couple of questions on the ductless split system for Prosser Heights, uh, status says incomplete.
I don't have a copy of the report in front of me, but it's, is that the final?
We can barely hear you.
I guess just, um, clearing my throat did it, um. So I don't have a copy of that, of the, the report in front of me, but if it's listed as, as, um, not, what was it, not complete?
Says incomplete in the status.
Incomplete for the final?
I don't even know. It just is a ductless split system at Prosser Heights. It just says test type was installation QA QC, status incomplete.
So I might have to ask Andy that question. Is that, is there an issue with the split system there now or was that a? A test that was done a while back?
So I actually have no idea about that. The only mini splits that we have over there for the, uh.
The IT room.
Uh, yeah, there's only two, I think, and it's just for computer rooms. As far as I know, they both work, so I don't know. What that pertains to.
So Edwin, when I've read these in the past and you can guide me on this, when they put that item on there, the letters and numbers that are on that. Is it, that, when they did that and then when they come back after they've reported it, does it have a different number or does it, that issue number stay the same? So like if I was to scroll down and look for that again, for that ductless to see where it may have been. They come through and it had an error, so it says incomplete and then they come back. Am I looking for the same ticket or job number? Or item number, do you remember?
I, I'm not very familiar with the, with the, uh, commissioning tracking program, so. Uh, but I would imagine there's something that, that's consistent, whether it's in, probably an issue number. If there, there would be an issue number that would be consistent throughout until it's resolved.
Yeah, that's what.
There was a pretty substantial punch list of stuff that, you know, doors where they got the wrong size windows and all sorts of things.
And that's different than the commissioning report, yeah.
Yeah, so I don't know if maybe it's part of that, I, that I couldn't say.
Well, I think, you know, the reason, you know, I, I spent probably too much time reading through every checklist. But we had so many issues with the building getting completed, that it, it kinda, I felt like it warranted that and I would hate to. And granted, maybe this isn't the, the right part to do this in, but.
I could shoot an email off to Dan here for him tomorrow, cuz he would, he would be the one actually probably that would know more about this than I would. Well, I know he would.
And then the commissioning agents, Vlad, I can't pronounce his last name, but he was, he's pretty, pretty much of a stickler on that kind of stuff, so we could. Ask him too, Andy.
Okay. Yeah, I'll, I'll pose a question in the morning, but like I say, the only mini splits I know of work, so I don't know why it would be on there.
So we could, we have a couple of options. We can table this until we have answers. Um, but I, um, and I don't mean but like, I'm, I'm not saying this isn't a good idea. But is there a deadline that we're meeting, Ed, for something for the ICOS report?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, I just wanted to ask that. So if we tabled one of these until we could get the answers for some of these, then.
Yeah.
Right.
It's, yeah. Yeah, it's a year after occupancy, however, a long year and a half after occupancy, so a couple of weeks or a month until the next board meeting shouldn't be an issue.
Well, I'll leave that up to the rest of the board, but that's just the, the few questions that I had.
I, I guess I, I, I mean, back, back to your comment about the, the fire system, I mean, does the commission. The, the final commission letter, I mean, it doesn't sound like that means that we're necessarily up to code on things.
What it says that was when they did it, it was at code.
Okay.
That's what the final commission report, so when they did that report. It worked to the specifications that it was built to on that day. And it's kind of, and, and I don't, I'm not trying to minimize this, but we, we have our car worked on. It fixed and the day, next day we drive off and something else breaks. I'm not, I'm not using that, it's that simplistic, but. If it worked at that point, then the smoke, whatever they're called, quit or work. Then we have an issue of either warranty or failure or life expectancy of whatever that item is. Or it breaks.
And, yeah, like with anything else, if you've got five hundred of something and you have a half a percent failure rate, you know, per year or whatever, then. There's gonna be something that needs, you know, consistent replacement.
I believe just to gain occupancy, everything had to have been tested and passed when new.
Especially for the, for the fire alarm or the fire sprinkler and fire alarm system, then the deputy state fire marshal checks that out. Commissioning agent does that, engineer does that.
So these, these are all things that have worked when they were installed to, you know, whatever date and then did pass inspection this year.
Oh, so the, this report is actually completed a year ago?
No, the one, the one, oh, the report, sorry. What I'm saying though is the report, everything had to pass to gain occupancy.
Right.
I'm sure all the functional testing was done before, before the district moved in.
This has been twenty, fall of twenty-two?
Is there a date on any of the?
It just says September twenty-four on the cover sheet, so I don't know.
Let's be when they assembled the thing, yeah. But the functional tests themselves would have been prior to that.
So it wasn't like a commissioning, and I can say this with utmost confidence, there's not been a commissioning company since I went to work. So these were steps that went on through the process. While the building was built, sorry, everybody. Steps that went on while the building was built through its process, and if we just stick with the fire as an example. It worked or we would have never been able to bring students in. And then that is our responsibility each year to have the systems checked and fix any diff, um. Deficiencies, thank you for the word, deficiencies that are there.
That clarified it.
Yeah, so I said, if, if we are at a warranty and it's kinda as is, then maybe.
Fire system at Witstrand.
Yeah.
It was, was there was a leak in the main and then when we had to have it reapproved, the fire marshal would not pass it because it was set. That particular one was. Where everything, everything had passed the test prior to you guys getting in the building. And then in the pipeline, there was a leak that had developed, and that was the issue then.
Well, in light of that, I guess, you know, if the commission report was done. Well, in light of that, I guess, you know, if the commission report was done a year and a half ago or longer, um, I just get to complain about it now. Uh, with that, this is a resolution, so I'll move to approve resolution ten twenty-four. Uh, final commissioning of Prosser Heights Elementary School.
I'd second it.
Then moved in seconded, uh, this is a, a roll call vote. Brian?
Hi.
Frank?
Hi.
Lisa?
Hi.
A two vote, I motion carries. Thanks, Ed. Oh, you got one more, you got two, one or two more, I think.
What, just two? Or just one?
Moving on to the Keene River View, uh, final commissioning report.
Same song, different verse. Um, less pages. Um, uh, I don't know what else to say. It's the same situation, it's smaller pages. Um, which tells me that things worked at the first try versus having to go back and do them again.
And it could also very well be that, um, with Prosser Heights being phased, that they were more, you know, they, they did it in chunks, whereas we're able to do whole systems at, uh, Carvee.
Oh, so that's a good learning for me, Ed. So because it was a phased project, they test it in phase one, and then they come back and test it in phase two. Thank you.
Any questions on Keene River View? I moved to, moved to approve resolution eleven twenty-four, Keene River View, final commissioning report.
Second.
Then moved in seconded, this is a resolution roll call vote, Brian?
Hi.
Frank?
Hi.
Lisa? A two vote, I motion carries.
Yes, so, um, for those of you, um, we had item three, final study and survey and resolution, but if you'll notice, there's no attachments. Uh, what ended up happening through a series of emails with Ed and I and Mark Brown with OSPI, there's a few more steps that had to happen during that before we could bring the resolution to you. So I believe Robert's rule of order would be asked to have it tabled because it is on the agenda.
Move to table the final study and survey, resolution twelve twenty-four. It's been moved in seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those same sign. She carries. Thanks, Ed, appreciate your time.
All right, anything else?
Talk to you tomorrow.
All right, thanks.
All right, next up is Mansfield contracts. You should have picked a closer seat.
So Andy, when you sit down to talk about this, let's talk about what we found out when we went to do the elevators and the pieces and why we're working with one company and so on. Let's tell the whole story, not just about the contracts.
Okay, so in the past, we've had, we did, uh, Williams for fire extinguishers, we did Mansfield for smoke alarms. We did, uh, fire control for sprinklers. Uh, it escapes me, there was five different companies we dealt with for different things. Uh, Mansfield has done right by us so far. And they're doing a deal where they, they put everything under one umbrella, so it's just one company. Uh, one invoice, one, and they schedule it all out, and so it's just that, that particular part of it just makes it super easy. So the, the deficiencies that they have here are, th- these are repairs, the, the, the ones you have in front of you, this isn't their, this isn't their monitoring contract or anything else, this is just the repair work for the deficiencies from this year. And then it's, like I said, it's, it's smoke alarms that didn't work or heat, heat sensors that were, didn't pass spec or whatever. Uh, most of the buildings, I think, were a couple of three thousand dollars. This particular building skyrocketed. The only sprinklers ironically we have in this building are on the stage. And they're going to have to like set up scaffolding. If you look at their invoice for this building, I don't remember exactly how much, but it's well over half is just labor. Man hours. And then there was a handful of sensors that they wanted to replace in the ductwork here. And they're so old, they want to update to, uh, it's a universal twelve volt, twenty-four volt. So everything will be the same and they won't be a, you know, forty year old sensor. So.
One of my, one of my questions to Andy was, why did we have this this year and not last year? Or why did we have this? And we don't really know the answer specific.
Well, there's, there's a couple of things. So I had been here, I don't remember exactly how long I've been here, but we were having the issue at Witstrand. And the guy from Fire Control Systems was there and he asked me, well, who's doing your sprinklers now? And I thought about it, I thought, well, I've been here a year and I know they have to be done and they haven't been done. So we went back and checked, well, they hadn't been scheduled from, from the last person, so we got on it real quick. So some of this was left over from going a long stretch, you know, like the sprinklers here. That's, that's the long and the short of that part. And then that's part of the reason I want to go with one company versus five different. Trying to schedule everybody and, and shoot emails, there's a tremendous amount of time wasted just trying to get people in and out and schedule, so.
Remember last year when we learned about the elevators not being inspected? Do you remember that discussion? So this is, this is that same type of thing and the things that I've been working with you since I came on board is about, and Deanna mentioned it in MTSS about systems. Systems have to be in place, things have to be scheduled, you have to have a check and balance, and this is something that should be done July one in the strangest way every year in that facility management plan you're talking about, so that everybody going forward has these systems in place and they just have not been.
A, a few weeks after Ms. Casey hired on, we were riding around and, and I don't remember, I was showing her something and I received a call. This was what, two days before school started? And they said, yeah, your, your elevators are not in compliance, you can't use them. I said, what do you mean? We have, we have the fire test, the smoke test, everything. He says, no, there's a shunt detector. Well, what's a shunt detector? That's exactly what I said, a what? Uh, so we, we, we worked it out. I mean, I, we, we got on the phone and I got people here to take care of it before school started. But it's just little things like that, that I didn't know what I didn't know. Nobody said anything and because, and in fact, that's one of the five companies we dealt with, they come and do one little detector uh, in each one of the elevators. So this way, like I said, it'll put everything under one umbrella. And if it doesn't get done, it's on them, because their contract will say everything gets done yearly. Like I say, the one, what you're looking at is just to fix what needs fixed this year. But there'll be a contract to follow.
He's talking about the systems in this building that are forty year old.
Yeah.
Trying to think of something, you've been discussing a lot, really important. Or it's kind of that maintenance, the facility upgrade, kind of that.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, we've had a talk about like doing the parking lots and some of them, I, twenty-five years probably since this particular one's had anything done to it. I mean, and so we have so much that needs done, it, it, what would be great is if we could get to a point, one a year, as opposed to five that all need done at the same time. It's just, get done what we can get done. But I know that the, the main cost on this particular building was man hours. Because they have to set up scaffold to do, it, it's, yeah, it's bad.
There's no, like in the other new buildings, there's crawl spaces, walk spaces, ladders that get you to the safe roofs and things like that, there's not in this building.
So on this, for this building, it's just relay sensors and the ductwork?
It's, it's, uh, it was like.
It's not actual sprinkler repair?
There is actually some sprinkler repair. The sprinklers have to be tested, there was something on the riser that needed to be changed out. And then they have to set up scaffold to do it and because it's on the stage, so you can't get a lift onto the stage and where it sits, they can't get a ladder to it, it's just a, and it's all for like thirteen sprinklers, it's ridiculous. So then none of the rest of the building has any sprinklers, just the stage. Don't know why, but that's, that's the way they built it.
Is that the oldest part of the building?
I don't think it is. Any other questions? I don't want to walk all the way to the back.
I'm gonna let you get back there and call you. Any other questions, students? Any questions?
Well, I make a motion. I make a motion to approve the Mansfield contract.
Then moved in second to approve the Mansfield contracts, Alexander, Kami, Gashimi. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I post same sign. Moving on to vouchers. Any questions on the vouchers?
Come on, somebody ask about the insurance check. I want that on public record.
I'll ask about what's the insurance check.
So for everybody knows, in the state of Washington, insurance has gone through the roof. And we have, um, our insurance bill, I don't want to quote the exact number, was a little over eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars to insure our district this year, and so we have four hundred and thirty thousand in September and four hundred and thirty thousand in October. I just.
USIP?
Yes. And so the reason I do that, um, is sometimes I think it's just, these are recorded and I don't want somebody to go back five years later and go, why did we pay four hundred and thirty thousand dollars to one organization?
What percentage higher is that than last year?
Thirty-seven?
Is it projected to go up again?
Uh, twenty-three to twenty-five. So when you want to talk to your legislatures about what's called MSOC, maintenance, systems and, I don't know. Basically the fundamental parts of our operations, that's what needs to be funded. Because I guarantee you our MSOC did not go up thirty-seven percent.
Sad part is it breaks and districts going up that much.
Well, there's an obviously big one here, the nine one zero one five eight USIP.
Yeah, that's it.
Three hundred eighty-one thousand, okay.
A portion of that is paid out of, uh, the TVF fund, because it, it involves the insurance of the buses. So general fund doesn't eat the whole thing, but it eats ninety percent of it.
I move to approve vouchers. It's been moved in seconded, students, thumbs up? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, those same sign, motion carries. That concludes our action items for tonight, moving on to consent, uh, consent items one through three.
I'll second it.
It's been moved in second to approve consent agenda. Thumbs up, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, those same sign. That concludes all our items tonight, moving on to reports. Delise, you're up first.
Okay, um, so I have October student enrollment, um, overall, our, our district FTE is up. Um, it's up fourteen. And our budgeted FTE is about the same, um, so just the difference, our budgeted FTE doesn't include any pass through money. So no open doors, no running star, no AOE. Um, so while our, we are up way more than we thought we were going to, and even keeping steady at over, you know, seventy-eight over budget is, is really good, especially for October.
When does the, right now we're going, working off the budgeted for apportionment, when, when's that, is it February?
January.
January.
So it'll go off of, um, November's count. Um, so whatever our account on November first is, we'll true it up and then it'll adjust our apportionment starting.
Perfect, thank you. Any questions for Delise? Thank you, Delise. Deanna, you're up next.
Uh, congratulations Kami and the soccer team, that's very exciting. Our volleyball's playing tomorrow, we win, we're in second place. Right now, if we lose, we're in third place, we can play the same team, either way, one difference. But whatever, um, so, but that's exciting, the girls are doing great, um, big news, oh, well, this, science adoption is restarted, we've had our first meeting and we're cruising, but um, today, Sava Mendoza, she's, she got third in the, in Nationals in Spanish Creed for FFA. She, um, is one of our avid students, she, uh, yeah, just doing fantastic, the first ever student to place for Washington State in that competition. So congrats to her. That's all for me.
And that's, I want everybody, once again, I always do this because it's recorded, I want you to know that is big news. Not only is it a national placing, but it's in one of our native languages in our community in Spanish Creed, and so it even, um, adds validity to the work that we're doing in our dual language programs and some of the other work that we're doing, so. And guess what? We've been on for two hours, you have a written report in front of you. And I'm going to just tell you, there's some really great things going on, um, you've got it in front of you. Um, the leadership and the work that Deanna and I are doing and the time that we're in the schools is increasing. And there's a saying in, in leadership, expect what you inspect. And so we're inspecting and what happens is our instruction gets better. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain any questions off the report, but you don't need to listen to me for ten more minutes.
Any questions? No more? All right, thank you.
Oh, I had one question about the smell.
Oh. Mm-hmm. So let me just tell you, we, um, we have the prank, I, the other day I said this was a thousand dollar an hour meeting, and I don't mean literally, but we had three city administrators. Myself, Andy, Fowler Construction, Cliffs, right, we've done all these, so we've done ductwork. Last week, we, um, cleaned the grease traps and the grease overflow completely clean. We snaked all the way to the city sewer line. Um, I mean, we have just done everything and the smell is still there. And so next week on the, oh, Andy's gone, I believe it's the thirtieth, it might be the thirtieth first, but the thirtieth, we are doing what's called a smoke test, I'm learning more about water and sewer than I ever cared to know. Basically, they put a smoke device, literally smoke into the water and sewer lines and what, because water lines are not full, the smoke rises to the top of the air area and comes out where the brakes are. And that smoke has dye and some different things, and then they find out where the leaks are. Um, that's our next step. Um, that's all I have really on that. Um, we have been cleared by the health department and the cleaner authority that we're safe and people are safe. But we still have to solve the problem.
No one's getting sick, headaches?
No, um, we have some, and I'm going to be respectful when I say this, complaints about a little bit of a headache or whatever, but I don't know if it's because of the huge amount of sensey that's in the room or actually the cell, smell. And what I'm saying is the smell is icky, it's not good. But according to the clean, the healthcare authority and the food or the health department, we're in within the range of healthy environment.
Thank you. Brian?
Uh, congratulations to our girls soccer team. It's pretty cool. Um, I, I, I do have, I, I had something written up, I guess, in response to the public comment tonight, um, I don't know if I missed my window here with that, um, since majority of everybody left. Um, but I, for anyone out there still listening and the, the handful of you that, that did stick around, um, I, I'm just going to read through this real quickly. Um, and if I'm out of order, I'm out of order, but as, as a new board member, um, you know, the, the thought is when you get elected in, you've got all these harebrained ideas of changes and the direction that you envision your school district going, and then you get up here and you find out how handcuffed you are by our state. And it is, uh, is very frustrating. To say the least. Um, so like I said, I, I'm going to read through this, um, hopefully, like I said, there's people online still listening and sure there's a group of people that'll, th- th- this will get back to, um, hopefully, so. We are truly in a spiritual battle right now, and unfortunately, this leads to forgetting what the basic role of a school district is. That role is to provide a safe space for students, staff and administration.
That role is to provide a safe space for students, staff, and administration, the opportunity to offer the best possible education that we can. It is not the district or the state's role to determine what's best for children outside of core classroom work. This is the role of parents. Unfortunately, with policies, bills, and laws being handed down, we are told that they have the best interest in mind for our children, they don't. They have little to no care about your kids, is my opinion, case in point. And even Saturday afternoon soccer game, wrestling match, or Friday night football game, you can't give a student athlete an ibuprofen without parental consent, however, a child can be sterilized, chemically castrated, or surgically disfigured for life without parents knowing. This isn't something that should be in the hands of any school district or state to decide. We're in a time where we see male athletes competing, and in some cases, cases hurting female athletes, taking away spots for district and state competitions, sharing locker rooms, restrooms, but again, told it's for the betterment of kids. I encourage parents, community, and students to be active in voicing their concerns, thoughts, and questions, not only at the local level, but at the state level as well. If we are truly going to see changes for the better, this is where the battle needs to happen. I can only imagine what's coming, but as I was reminded by my wife, we must keep fighting the good fight. More than likely, we will take more losses than wins, but in the end, we will not only be judged for the battles we fought, but also those that we did. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian, uh, Frank?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the people and the folks who came out, and it really shows our community's support here in Prosser, and that people really care, they care about our kids, they care about the safety of our kids, and and as well as I do, um, you know, I, I've already been talking to some, some legislators, county commissioners, and I'm sure we're gonna, we're gonna get together and talk about, hopefully, we can talk about some things that we can do. Um, so your, your concerns are not being ignored. But I just wanna thank everybody for their, their comments.
Um, I don't have much, I just wanted to, um, let people know that there was a group of seniors that had heard about a wheelchair ramp for one of our fellow students, um, and it needed, it was in disrepair, unsafe. Uh, these seniors took it upon themselves to repair the wheelchair ramp and make it safe and accessible for this, another one of our students. Um, so I just, you know, I think, um, I wanna thank those students for what they did and taken, you know, the initiative in helping a fellow student out. But also that, you know, that's what community is, right, it, that's what that's what our kids are capable of doing and, and, and showing the community support for each other, et cetera, so I just wanted to make sure we mention that, that there, we, we've got good kids here, so. With that, that concludes our meeting for tonight, uh, future meeting is, we got a regular board meeting November thirteenth, right here. Almost had me for a second, it's not in the library workroom, but it is right here at the old Prosser High School. Um, and then we have a safety secure, security meeting that day at five o'clock. This meeting's adjourned.